I will call the meeting to order. And I'm going to start with what we call in the legislature a point of personal privilege. And I want to take a moment tonight to recognize Marla Durham for her years of service as a school board member. This is Marla's last official meeting. I haven't calculated her exact years of service, but I know she was serving me with me in 1998.
Ninety-five.
Well, ninety-eight, we went through a very difficult time. And then she left board service for a while and came back and ran for a position on the merged board. So we have been incredibly fortunate to have her. I have appreciated Marla's straightforwardness, her attention to detail, and her constant focus on students. So, Marla, thank you.
It just shows I was a fool. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. All right. So any comments from the public on items not on the agenda? All right. Then we'll move to the consent agenda. Marla, I've been scribbling because you weren't here. So are you ready or do you?
I'm not prepared for your motion.
Okay, so I'll do it. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes from the March nineteenth meeting, the warrants, approval of leave for Samantha Ellenson, who is a school district psychologist, and Paula Palermo, who is a fourth grade teacher at Flanders, and professional appointments for Julia Pritchard as the director of student support services at Essex High School, Carol Crowther for one-year temporary position as a fifth grade teacher at Fleming, and Alexis Kelly of one-year temporary position as a fourth grade teacher at Fleming.
I actually had a question about that last round.
Sorry. So who I should have started with? What do you want to pull from the agenda?
I need a professional appointment for Kelly.
Okay, so we'll pull that. Anything else that needs to be pulled? All right. So would somebody make that motion?
I might.
Brendan? We'll do Brendan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay. So Kelly, what's your question on Alexis Kelly?
First, I wanted to be sure that we were clear on which grade the position was for because on the front page it says, the recommendation for higher page says fourth grade, but all of her application materials say fifth grade. So I just wanted to make sure we were talking about the right grade. I also was a little bit confused by the Teach for America service for six months because I didn't know that there was Teach for America for less than like one or two years, but I'm sure that that was covered in the interview process. So yeah, my main question was which grade is she actually being hired for?
Fifth, I mean, fourth, sorry. It is fourth. She applied for a fifth grade, so they had both openings.
Gotcha.
And she received the fourth grade.
Thank you.
Okay.
Confused me.
I'll entertain a motion that we approve Alexis Kelly for her one-year temporary position as a fourth grade teacher at Fleming.
Motion made.
Thanks, Aunt Renee. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay. Wonderful. Okay. So our first learning piece tonight is an update on personalized learning plans. And Eric, I think you're going to take this. Well, Ellen, hello.
I have some slides to hand out. Just give them to me if there's leftovers, we can pass them over.
How are you? To yourselves, I think we've gotten to you, but just to make sure.
Yeah. So my name's Eric Mortensen. I work over at the EWSD district office in the east side of town. And one of my responsibilities is coordinating personalized learning plans for the district in addition to a few other things. So we're just, and Ellen, do you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Ellen Thompson, lately of EWSD, not of completely and soon not to be. But anyway, I am working on personalized learning plans with Eric this year.
So we can, I came in the fall, in October, and gave you kind of an update of our summer work. A lot's happened since then, so we're going to kind of share what's happened since then as the work has been moving forward in the schools and as we've begun kind of shifting our approach for next year. So I'll go into that in a few moments. I just want to point out on the slide that the vision, the overall vision, or the rationale behind personalized learning plans within the district is to give students ownership over their learning and to create a personalized pathway to their future. So that's what we're always working towards in this work. So across the four schools that are affected, the middle levels and the high school, the way that PLP work has been scheduled into their programming varies across the board. So I have Jen and Kevin here who can talk to their schools, but I'll talk quickly about Westford's doing it within their team structure, small enough, they're flexible enough to do that. And then Essex High School is supposed to be working on PLPs during their advisory periods. And there's some complications that go along with that as well, and I'll get to those a little bit later as well.
And Rob would have been here, but he's sick.
Oh.
At ADL, we have a weekly wellness block where students over the course of the year are in wellness round number four right now. So kids have choices of different activities they can do during this weekly forty-minute block. And we have planned out the year where we have, we use that time during that wellness block for students to go on team to work on their personalized learning plans. So different breaks throughout the year. We take a break from their wellness round and we work on personalized learning plans during wellness time this year.
At the Essex Middle School, we are really team-centered, so the teams have that autonomy to be able to put it into where they feel like it makes the most sense for them. Some teams have used a few of their morning meeting blocks, some teams have used maybe during their science class, whatever it is that got us to that point. One of the things that I'm sure Eric will get to later on is as a staff, we're trying to figure out how to make them just what we do so that it's not about finding a time, it's about we just, it continuously is happening all the time. And I would say that's something that we're working, we're working towards overall. And I think that's something that students want, and I'll get into that in a few moments as well. Some successes that we've had this year, teachers and students are beginning to talk about PLPs as something that's real. I put real in quotes, like they really exist and we have to do them. So people are, they're not something that's just going to go away. So people are talking about them as if they're tangible. That's probably the first time in a long time that that's happened. We had some student forums just a couple weeks ago, which were wonderful, and part of our share out today is going to be kind of the results from that. Your two student reps participated in that for the high school. And not to put them on the spot, but maybe when we get to that section, you'll be able to share out a little bit of your perspective from those, from that afternoon. So student forum participants have indicated that they're excited, they were jazzed when they learned a little bit more about PLPs and are eager to help get the messaging out to people. That students understand that school, they understand school and can assist in visioning work for PLP development, so it's their reality. Students are in the schools every day, just like teachers, and I, and we would like them to help with that visioning work and moving us forward. That we've begun a process for the inclusion of student voice and visioning for the future, so we want to continue that process going forward. We think it's really important. Schools so far have set aside some time for this work. As we just shared, it's a little different at each place, and there's a different amount of time that's set aside in each building. Next year, there's going to be a direct connection between PLPs and EHS graduation requirements as required in Act seventy-seven. And we have a dedicated PLP task team who's been meeting regularly over the course of this year, and that will continue to meet in order to make this better for students. These are a couple examples, they're very small. They actually look bigger on a much smaller screen. So these are some student examples from the work that some middle school students have done this year within their PLPs. I'm just going to point, I know, sorry. This is, but I'll kind of give you a rundown of what's here. So one of the pieces that was part of the middle school about me section was this, not requirement, but offer to create a Wordle about themselves. And so this student is really, the student with the image at the top is really into swimming, so she made her Wordle representative of the Olympic rings. And that connects down the tile right below the rings is that student's goal, which is around swimming. So there's a connection between who they are and the goals that they're setting. So making those connections has been part of the work that kids have done. The middle one across the bottom, that's a student who is really into guitar and has decided that he wants to work on becoming more like Eric Clapton and learning Eric Clapton's songs and becoming a better guitar player. And there were connections in his about me page, too. We're trying to keep student anonymity in this a little bit, so that's why we're kind of, we have certain pieces that are cut out a little bit. The top one on the right, this is a portion of this student's about me page, and this student is really into animals and wants to do some work with the Humane Society. And I think I actually cut her goal page out, but her goal was linked to training dogs. There was a personal goal that that kiddo set. And then below the bottom tile for this student is an academic goal that a student set, which is around reading and reading more. So those are some middle school examples. I consider these all to be successful, especially as I looked through their PLPs, they made connections between who they thought they were as people and the goals that they were setting for themselves, both academic and personal goals. And the high school, this is an example of a high school student's about me page. They were more open-ended, didn't have specific prompts, which I think led to kind of a variation in length, maybe even quality, whatever that means. But this person created an about me page that told about themselves and the sports that they're interested in and the fact that they're looking into going into the medical field. So that's a good thing to know if you're a teacher trying to help someone plan, a teacher or counselor looking to help someone plan a pathway for themselves. That one little bit of information in their autobiography could help you and could make the difference in pointing that student in the right direction and supporting them in that process. And then one of the things that came up at the high school is that because, this is one of the complications. So because they've been doing work in advisory, they're actually, and they're not a one-to-one school this year, not everyone had access to computers in order to work on them. That creates a conundrum, right? So especially when they've set up extra advisories in order to accommodate this work. So one of the workarounds that they did was they actually created some goal-setting sheets for kids and asked kids who had iPhones to download the app associated with Bulb, the tool that we're using, and they took pictures and uploaded that as pieces of evidence. So that's an example of a student's goal sheet that was uploaded. So just to kind of clarify why those look a little different. So some of the challenges that we've had this year, so we're in year two of a merger, and so we've been competing for attention during a period of immense change. There's a lot going on, there's a lot of things required for people. So getting airtime for professional development has been interesting. In some places, the other piece is I'm one person, and fourth, the opportunities that I'd have to go to one school or to all of the schools happen at the same week. So there's a timing issue, too, as well. So I know there's been times where ADL and EMS want to have a training at the same time, and I just can't accommodate both, both schools at the same time. So that's been an issue. Increasing relevance for students, we hear you. We know that, and so we're working on that. And then we're looking forward to more integration with regular courses, so that's been a challenge this year. Creating avenues for choice within current classes, there are some classes that do that and some that don't. So creating that, those opportunities in all courses would be something to move forward to. Finding time in existing school schedules to do the work, so time for exploring the tool and the process, and then accessing, what I was just saying before, accessing machines at some grade levels has been difficult. We currently don't have a system of accountability. We know that that's an issue as well. The software vendor is currently looking at options for that, including some new reporting features, so I've been working with them to see what makes sense. They're currently looking at some type of even rubric system as a way that could be beneficial for, for creating accountability for both students and teachers.
Can I add live there just a second?
Yeah, go for it.
I would say that there is a system of accountability around PLPs. Teachers and administrators are all aware of what kids are doing. What there isn't is within the tool, a way for Eric to call up all seventh grade PLPs and say, are they complete at this moment? But it's a, right now, we're a human endeavor as far as our accountability system.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then we know that there have been issues with communication, both in terms of modes and layers of communication. So trying to create a better stream for communication is something that we're working towards as well. Do you want to talk about these?
I would.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. So Eric and I had talked a lot with the PLP task team about the idea that, well, we all had talked about the idea that we were missing student voice, and so student voice was something. And I think all of a sudden, one day, we said, well, why aren't we doing it? And we decided we would. We actually worked with Reed Dyer from the Great Schools Partnership, talked with him about how he sets up his forums, and then we went at it. So we held four different forums, at ADL, one at EMS, Westford, and the high school. There were thirty-six students that were part of it. Groups ranged in size from six to twelve. I think they all were scheduled to have about twelve, but things happened, and so some kids couldn't get there, whether there was a test or something in that period or whatnot. The forums lasted between one and a half and two hours, and there was at least one staff member from each school who participated. And we used the exact same questions and protocol at each of the forums. And that was important to us because one of the things we wanted to do was to take all of that data back and code it and begin to look at the central themes that came out of it across the district, not school by school. So, do you want to keep going?
Go for it.
The purpose was to make sure that PLPs will reflect the diverse perspectives of students while increasing student buy-in and generating student ownership. We actually had great realization of that goal at the end of every forum. The kids were wonderful, and they had great ideas, and at the end of it, they were like, this is really cool. Like they just had time, an hour and a half to two hours, to think about what their PLP could be with a group of other kids, and it just changed, their whole dynamic changed quite a bit. So our goal for the forums was to provide a platform for them to share their experience, their aspirations, and their concerns, and to ensure that personalized learning plans are shaped by their voices. And what Eric and I did, as I said before, is we sat with all the narrative data, and we did a qualitative coding with it to come up with the central themes that we're going to share with you next.
Ellen, can I just share one thing?
Sure.
And you hit upon it with the concerns, but I'm sure Jen did the same thing, but we strategically chose students.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes.
That bought in and students that didn't buy in to it. So that, so that was a really good representation of.
It was, yeah.
That was the same across all four schools.
Yeah.
The other, just one quick, quick piece about the protocols that we used. While there were opportunities to share concerns, that wasn't the focus. We were really doing visioning exercises with them and looking towards the future. So I just want to put that out there a little bit. So, so each forum had a couple rounds of think pair share questions, and there were two questions that went along with each round that were related to each other. So this first one was, what are you excited about in regards to your learning and how might you use this excitement to want to learn more? So we posed those questions to students, they sat with a partner and had a conversation about that, and then they came back out with responses that responded to those questions. And so when we looked at the results from all four schools, that's what we came up with. Students felt that they learn best when school takes into account their interests, allows for choice, promotes active learning and fun experiences. It's further enhanced by helping students see learning success connected to their future possibilities. Students recognize that learning can be transferred from one setting or subject area to another. Students appreciate opportunities to share learning with peers through discussion and working together. And students realize that this type of learning, that the type of learning they desire is contingent on the type of teaching used in the classroom. So that's pretty, we have some pretty insightful students. That's, that's pretty awesome.
Yeah.
And so, don't forget, we did this over the course of eight hours with them, so we have a lot of responses, and these things just kept coming up again and again across all of our schools. Do you want to read this one?
Sure. So the second set of questions was, how is your school supporting your interests and choices for learning, and what could a school do to ensure you're prepared for the future? This was an interesting conversation. When they paired up and then shared out, and then usually the full group also responded to the share outs as well. And one of us was madly taking notes, trying to get every word that we could down on paper, on, in digital space. So students indicated a strong desire for more choice. Choice is, if there's any word you're going to think about at the end of this, it's going to be the word choice, that they wanted more choice in the school learning, especially at the middle level. They would like classes to include the ability to honor students' interests, helping them to create pathways for their future studies. They believe there could be more options for choice of classes beyond those that are required by their school. By that, they meant, you know, in those unified arts blocks, that there might be other things that they could do based on interest versus music, art, you know, whatever, just kind of the steady piece that they've been doing since kindergarten. Middle-level students, students also felt that the social connection, i.e. friends, were a positive contribution to their learning. There's much discussion about that, that they are often separated from their friends so they can make new friends, but they said by middle level, they have friends. And so it was, it was a really intense conversation, it was a good one. Students acknowledged that there are systems and structures such as scheduling that seem to hinder the addition of more interest-based options. So they were realistic. I mean, they voiced some things, and they said, well, maybe we can't do that because, you know, kind of stuff. So they were, they were staying in sort of that realistic state of mind. Students identified middle school as the place or time where and when pathways begin to develop. So these students that were in the middle level were sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And to a T, they all said, we're starting to figure this out. Like now we know what we want to do, we know what our choices we want them to be. So they're beginning, they really believe that if they had more choice at middle level, and I love this, this is a direct quote, it would provide a softer landing once they reached high school. In other words, they've heard rumors that at high school they're going to have choices, but they're not so clear about that yet, and yet they know they don't want to miss anything. So they want to understand how this choice thing works so they can move into it. Go for it.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
Yes.
Sorry, I had to walk in early. If you could go, yeah, sorry. You can go back one more slide, yeah.
Not that one.
Yeah, round two, please. So I see the second question is covered very well here, but I see absolutely nothing in there about how your school is supporting your interests and choices for learning.
We, we're not done with the response yet. There's, that next slide is the second half of the response.
Right, yeah, I was, I was curious because that was the first question, so I'm.
And I will tell you that they didn't answer one question, then the next. They had both questions.
They were mixed.
They talked about both, and what they shared out often was the second one, so it was sort of trying to get them back into that one, but.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah. So here's the other part of it. Many students indicated the need for more hands-on active learning throughout their schedule, so here's something their school could do. They also stated that there is a need for student support to focus on being challenged to learn more. They were very articulate about this, but also for assistance when learning is hard. So they see a lot of assistance when learning is hard, but want to be pushed harder when learning isn't hard. Do you know what I mean? Or they want to be challenged for themselves. Student-teacher and student-to-student relationships are needed. So this idea of the friends comes through this one a little bit, but also a lot of talk about teachers understanding me as a student, that would help. Do you know what I mean? That would help me be able to tell them what I need, kind of thing. Communication came up, was stated to be necessary for fully accessing choice. Many students stated the need to have more information available in the middle level and high school to help students make good pathway choices and not miss an opportunity. A little bit of discussion about the fact that there's lots of good stuff happening, but not sure that everybody knows good stuff is happening. And so how do you, how do you get that in front of people so that people, and that's where that middle level, loading up of, in the middle level, a little bit more information about the high school, so they go into the high school as a knowledgeable consumer.
And then kind of the last part of our sessions with them, we did some, we did a carousel activity. We had different charts set up, and groups of kids would go from chart to chart to chart to chart, and then back to their original chart, and they would report out. So the data that we're reporting here, the responses were quite different between middle and high school, and were kind of specific between the two schools, or between the two age levels, so we decided to keep them separated for this context. And so this is what they reported out on. So the first question was, personalized learning plans are designed to give you ownership over your learning to create a personalized pathway for your future. How could PLPs better apply to your school experience? Middle school, again, emphasized this idea of they want more choice, the ability to engage in activities outside of school, talking with others with similar interests, whether that be in school or out of school, internships for practical learning. Some middle schoolers were really jazzed about the idea of doing an internship at such a young age, which is kind of neat. Setting goals for multiple classes, not just one, and then having more time to work on them in school. So there's that time piece again that we were talking about.
Can I add in one thing? Their idea of practical learning, though, apparently it was the season because they all wanted to know how to do taxes.
Yeah.
So it came up in every forum, it was like, okay, all right, sure, not me.
All four schools. It was the, it was so, it was so great.
Of all the things.
In fact, at one school, they wanted to, they thought maybe it could be fun to take a week to be fake adults for a week, and like create a mini society in the school where you go to classes and that's your job and, and stuff like that. So it was cool. And then at high school, this idea of not sticking to SMART walls. I would actually say universally, people don't like the SMART wall format, so we'll look at that. Jen will, I'll ask Jen to say something about that in a few minutes. A focus on post-high school planning, looking to the future, maybe doing some college or career planning work within there as a primary focus. The ability to set goals that are different from the current plan. This is something that we've actually kept in mind since the beginning, was this ability to reset goals, and if you're going down a pathway that you decide this is no longer appropriate for you, to have a no harm, no foul ability to kind of reset that and change your pathway. Do you want to talk about the goal thing? I love, I love the way that you talk about it.
Oh, well, I just think it was a big takeaway for me, coming from the student forum, and I just want to say Eric and Ellen did such a phenomenal job structuring that forum, and it was, it was a great opportunity to meet with kids and hear them talk, not just about PLPs, but about schooling in general and what they're really enjoying about it, what they want to see more of. But the piece around the goals that really stood out to me when we left is that the way that it's been structured in the PLPs and having to set specific goals beginning of the year and then put in your evidence around that specific goal at different times is really, it really sets kids in a certain way, and it's not, it's just too formalized, and we really need to loosen it up a little bit and break it open and make it more open-ended for them. And I think structuring some different questions around, as simple as, you know, what will, you know, think about personal, personal success you've had or an academic success you've had, you know, in, every six weeks, we ask kids to reflect on that. Or maybe the beginning of the year, what would it look like if you've had a successful year in sixth grade? And then every six weeks, kind of reflecting on what has been successful. And then every six weeks, kind of reflecting on what has been successful for you, what has been a challenge for you. But just kind of opening it up a little more rather than having them have to do this specific goal and kind of keep to that was a huge piece for all of the kids that was really clear in that, in that forum.
They equated the PLPs with, they wanted to acknowledge their success in their learning. That's what they wanted to chronicle. And nobody liked the word goal.
Yeah. In fact, the, the quote that kind of spawned this was, kids don't care about goals. They just care about being successful.
Right.
And so it was really.
Out of the mouths of babes.
And goals change, right? Goals change for adults. So I think makes a lot of sense.
Goals should change.
Yeah.
There's a lot of research to show that having a goal and working toward a goal is more predictive of success. So how do you make sure that there still is some focus? I think the focus has to be able to change. Yes, we all change what we think we're going to do. But, but having a goal in seventh grade is a great predictor of future success.
And, and they would say, name it, anything else. But the word goal has a negative connotation to them, that it's something that they're going to be on demand to have to prove. And so it's, it's, and that's probably in some respects our fault. We did it a little too tight, thinking we could loosen it. So we just have to think about the semantics of it. I agree with you. The research is strong on goal setting. And that success in learning, I think, comes from, what did you do to make yourself successful? And then backtracking and see what your action steps were. I think we can get to that point without necessarily having to say the word goal.
Or, or keep it as a SMART goal format. Like even, even the, the ability to set more flexible goals or more of different format.
We talked about the process being messy. It's messy for us. And so what they put, like, we were in, we encouraged them all to write a goal. Well, maybe what we should have encouraged them all was to brainstorm all my potential goals, wait a week and then come back to it. But again, we, I think we rushed the process a little bit too much perhaps.
What, maybe, what's your plan for your future? It doesn't have to be.
Exactly, yeah.
Ask questions, that's another word that we've been running around.
Yes.
The next question that we had was, what's exciting about PLPs and what concerns do you have? This was an opportunity for them to kind of think more about, like, what could this be? What, what could make you jazzed about this? And then based on what we know now and our experience now, what's not working? So what's exciting for, at the middle level was that kids can get the help they need. They can think about what they want to accomplish. They are able to check back and, and the ability to see change over time. That's one of the benefits that we still see by having a portfolio tool, is the ability to do that change over time. Some concerns are, there's a perception that not all classes are using them. That being told that their goals aren't good enough. So that idea of having maybe too much intervention into what goals they're setting. And that this idea that goals are, are long-term and hard to track in the short term. So if you have a long-term goal and you're coming back to it six weeks later, you're, you may not make great progress towards it. So they're having, it's that idea of goals maybe being too big or too broad for them. And then at the high school, exciting are motivation. They could be motivating for people. This idea of getting credit for them, that was a, something that came up, is the ability to either recover credits for PLP work in general or credits for external things. I know one of the things that's been floated here is the ability to play a sport and maybe using this as an opportunity to document that in order to get credit for something. So seeing that as a potential. And then the ability to have time set aside to set goals and to plan for the future. And some concerns were finding balance between the structure that is currently set up or that they perceive as being set up. And having some freedom in developing that the way that they want. And right now, the teacher involvement, they're looking for more teacher involvement in PLPs.
I think it's variable. It's varied, yeah.
So I would love to circle back on middle school concerns. And, and when the kid said, like, being told the goals aren't good enough. I think that's a, a pretty universally known thing throughout students at schools. You know, I, I know several instances where that's, you know, happened. And I feel like that's a really good jumping off point for you guys to kind of take that into, into, you know, reshaping the, the goals and aspirations. And I, I think that's a really good point to, to kind of grab that and work on it.
Yeah. It was, it was quite insightful. There was another survey that was done earlier at ADL and that came up a couple of times within that survey as well. So it's a theme that's come up a few times in our, I don't want to call it our research, but in our research. Do you want to do this one?
Sure. So the third chart was, what role should students have in helping to implement PLPs at your school? The middle school students talked a little bit about brainstorming what PLPs could be. So actually, they would like to give input and they, they actually want to restructure what they're being asked to write about. They thought they could come up with better ideas than about me. Okay, so they, they really had, they were very concrete about the fact that they could do a whole lot better if the prompts were better. So it was like, okay. So I do believe they, they felt this session was their ability to give input into the process. So they really talked about that quite a bit. The high school students, being able to decide what the PLPs look like, it's really the same. Can art be included, class credit and having student ambassadors? How do we get, I think that all revolves in some respects around the buy-in. You know, how do we get kids engaged in it? There is right now sort of variability on, on how jazzed teachers are or how jazzed kids are. And so how do you get that to equal out so that you get everybody sort of motivated to do it? Laura or Grace, do you want to jump in? You were in there in the throes of it. Just go for it if you.
Okay. I think for being able to decide what it looked like, we also meant like physically, like being able to alter like the background of a PLP, like the color. Like that's really superficial, but it's a good way to personalize. And then art included was that, like, I think in order to get PLPs, like, really going, we should like show kids like a really good PLP that someone made. And I know for me, I love it when people make art and it's like really nice because I'm not an artist at all. And I know there's people in my grade who are so good at art. Like if they made a PLP with their artwork, like I think a lot of people would be like, oh, PLPs are actually really cool and a great instrument and we should all use it. So that's kind of what I think we meant by art included. Yeah, I would kind of like to circle back to like the slide where there was the thing about like more planning for college, if you don't mind. And yeah, the post-high school planning, just kind of elaborating on that. I think like other people in my grade would agree. But I feel like for planning for like post-high school, like the guidance people are like very supportive. But sometimes there's like not enough structure. Because I remember like asking my guidance counselor, I'm like, oh, do you think this list of schools looks good? And they were kind of like, yeah, you do you, girl. And like, that's great, but I think like, considering that, like my parents never went to college here. Like they didn't, they, they didn't know what was going on and I kind of felt lost. And I feel like PLPs could really help with that. And I remember writing on the sheet, like, having kids who like are thinking about going to college, identify like safety, match and like reach schools and stuff. So I think that's like really helpful, so like more structure to kind of complement with the meetings that you have with guidance counselors. So, yeah. Okay, do you want to talk about like student ambassadors?
Oh, yeah.
And like credit?
I was actually just going to talk.
Okay, good. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I, I think it would be really cool if we could have like groups of students at, at each school that had, you know, just to, as like a starting point, that had a more in-depth understanding of PLPs. And then they could really get that to other students. Because I, I mean, you all are lovely. But it's really nice to hear good things about school from students instead of, you know, faculty administration. Again, you guys are lovely. But I think it would be really cool if we had like groups of students who, who could kind of pass that off to other students and, and help in, in creating questions for PLPs and stuff like that. And, and just elaborating on what Grace was saying. I feel like, especially for me, one of the, the most important things that I'm really excited about is having a, a physical connection to PLPs. Whether it's, it's like art or, or you know, whatever your goal might be, like swimming or, or something. Instead of just having it be virtual and, and online, having like a physical thing.
Oh, wait, did we talk about like potentially having like an end of the year like celebration? Kind of like presentation kind of thing where people like all celebrate like achieving goals?
Yeah.
Let's finish the presentation.
Yep, yep.
Open it up to more questions and thoughts, yeah.
We only have a couple more slides left, I promise. Do you want to do chart four to you?
Sure. So what kind of support from these groups will you need to construct a meaningful PLP? We talked about parents, teachers, and other supports. I usually ran around to everybody and said, that might be community. So there might be other people. And so middle school felt that teachers were giving more choice.
Or they could give more choice.
Give more choice, more activities out of schooling included. They also talked about the fact that they liked, they would like to talk one-on-one sometimes about their goals or their success with their teachers. Not always with the assignment kind of given and we all do it. They actually wanted to sort of have counsel, you know, like mentor kind of thing. Setting aside more time for PLPs, that's very, it's, it's different at every school, as I said before. Sometimes it's team time, sometimes it's other time. So they just would like to have more time set aside. They felt that their parents could be, give them motivational support. And they felt that there were other people, there were experts in music, theater, sports, people that could either come to them or they could go to them. This is where the internship conversation was coming out of. This idea of getting to know more than what's offered at my school, so to speak. And then the high school, this has been a time crunch. So I would say that this has been, because it's advisory and advisory is short and then we had a change in how advisory worked. You're talking about 15 minutes a, a week. And that's, you know, so this idea, don't rush me, don't rush the students. They need more time to be able to do this. The parents could be more helpful if they understood it better. I think that's how that one goes. And then this idea of ongoing feedback from the administration and from teachers. I think that goes back to that idea of talking with people one-on-one with your advisor about your goals versus just trying to put evidence in. It's like having it be a meaningful conversation. And then I'll get the things in, but I'll be better, I'll better understand how to do it.
And then kind of the last piece was, we did, we did an exit survey before people left the room. And we just had three questions. One was just around, how was your experience in participating in the forum? Overall, students enjoyed the forum process. They felt that they were, they had, there was a strong response to having voice and to being heard. And many indicated an interest to learn more. I would say just an, an extra sentence to that is many indicated an interest to do this again as well.
Like next week.
To participate in the future, yeah. And that's, and that's in the, that's in the roadmap, I guess, for the future is to continue these sessions because they're really beneficial. Based on our conversation today, what do you think are the most important things to consider when further developing PLPs for the district? And that the systems across schools do not currently offer a means to be more flexible with PLPs. Issues of time, credit, choice, and support run throughout. And respondents indicated strongly that student choice and voice in PLPs is needed. So that more flexibility, the ability to have more choice options or different pathways even at the middle level, so those types of things. That issue of credit comes up a lot at the high school. So for next year, we've added it in as a graduation requirement. But students indicated that it would be interesting to offer a credit or a quarter credit or something like that each year so that it adds up to a whole credit for PLP by the time you finish your, your career if you're at EHS for a full year. So that's something I've talked to Mr. Riordan about and thinking about for the following years, the next program of studies comes out. And then we just asked them to write any final thoughts they had, just an open-ended question based on their experience. And so students indicated that there's a possibility and potential for PLPs to make students more engaged for their learning. That was kind of a universal response. They're like, wow, this could be really cool. So it was, it was good. And then these are just some opportunities for the future based on, on the work that, that we've done throughout this whole year and based on the results of these student forums, which is continued development of the PLP process with a district-wide task team. We're meeting again at the end of June to revise requirements that better reflect student aspirations. We're also looking to get some student reps to come work with that group as well. And still kind of figuring out how to structure that.
And we'd like to have both high school and middle level.
Yeah.
Because I think they have different concerns or similar but different.
Yep. That there's student leadership opportunities at each school. So seeing how we can structure maybe like a PL, PLP leadership, I don't know if you would, leadership council, I don't know if you want to call that, but a student leadership group around PLPs at each school. That would be an interesting way to kind of get buy-in and maybe be a little train the trainers within their building as well to help support their teachers and other students. Developing ways for PLPs to become more embedded in how we do education, not just something to the side. So that's the idea of getting it embedded into the work that kids are doing every day. Continued collaboration with students, teachers, and administration to identify needs to increase relevance and to provide additional support. Identify choice options for middle school students. And then this idea of going beyond. So there have been some conversations about the use of BULB as an e-portfolio outside of PLPs as well. So that again, it becomes part of what people do. The tool's not just a PLP tool, but they're also using it to store work or to create showcases or to use it for other, or student reporting, other kinds of opportunities for them. And that's it.
Great, thank you. That was very exciting. Questions and comments.
Just a couple. I, I realize the trying to get a clip from the teachers is pretty difficult because of their busy schedules as well. But have you considered just a piece of paper handwritten as a check off as to who and has not completed a PLP?
So.
And then, and then you get some feedback.
Yep.
We have servant.
Yeah, we've, we've created a, a survey to go out to teachers. It wasn't implemented very well. And so there, there's just some logistics. Like there's a lot of teachers, how to, who ensures that there's, that all of them come back? Who ensures that? So like it's, it's more complicated in my opinion than just sending a survey out and getting it back. There's just a, an extra organizational component to it.
Second part of this had to do with modeling.
Yep.
Have you considered modeling a, a typical or a semi-typical PLP involved for each of the different levels, middle versus high school?
Yes, the answer is yes to that. I think our hope for that was to get real student work instead of work that comes from someone in their mid-30s, which will look a lot different than a, than something coming from someone who's 12. So, so yes, that is something that we want to do.
So at the end of this year, that's what we're looking to collect are those models.
Okay.
But I will tell you, the teachers modeled the process in their classroom and they created their own PLPs, especially at the middle level, and shared with the kids their about me's, their interest in all of the things that were shaping their.
I think that was a big piece that really helped with move it forward this year for us at ADL is that the work that happened in the summer, the lessons that were built. We spent time preloading, front-loading that in faculty meetings, going over that as a staff together before we implemented it with students. So we could look at, okay, what potential questions will we have? Making sure that we could model that together. And that really helped the process go much more smoothly this year, so it was really helpful.
Third, just a suggestion. Why not consider a video that is targeted for the teacher, the student, and the parents that can be put online, that they can look at and gather some information regarding it? Because everyone's under a time constraint, but that ought to be a check mark.
So, and so Eric did create a website at the district level with all of that information on it. And we have to gather real examples to do the video part, so that's where we're at.
Because the modeling, if the modeling was built into the video, it would give them a concrete idea about what it's all about. And then they can think about how it fits into their needs. And the parent, and bring the parents on board at the same time.
Yeah.
I, I think it's pretty important that you're considering this, how do we involve the teacher aspect? Because that's what we've been hearing from the student reps a lot. I feel like the way that Act 77 was framed, it sounds like flexible pathways is just about getting um, it sounds like flexible pathways is just about getting students more opportunities outside of the traditional classroom. And that kind of devalues the role of the teacher, but it's not really what it's about. I mean, a lot of students have goals that are not in any way connected with the traditional classroom, like being Eric Clapton, who was not particularly competent in the classroom. That was not his skill set. Um, but for teachers, they have the expertise to say, you know, if you want to be Eric Clapton, it's going to help to have financial literacy and to attend health class. So you know cocaine is bad for you. And like, all, all the other skill set that you'll need as a rock star, as a rock star. And here's other things you could succeed at with the skills that you'll be building playing your guitar ten hours a day. Um, so I think just as we do this, trying to reframe that, there is a huge amount of value that will still be coming in the classroom as students get that perspective from teachers to build how they can complement those. My goal is to run a dog walking business with what you can learn in the classroom.
I would also frame it that flexible pathways don't necessarily need to be outside of the classroom either. Like, um, the, the fact that someone might want to be a marine biologist, there might not be a traditional pathway by just going through the high school graduation requirements, but being able to focus on those particular courses, um, that might interest them in that direction or might support them in moving in that direction. Doesn't necessarily take them outside of the school.
And I think the, the, on the slideshow with the student results where they talk about having it be more embedded in our actual day, that's what they're talking about, is that they want more choices within their class structures and so that they can go deeper into areas that are, are more valuable to them at that particular point. It's not like, they all agreed, they all needed the foundations, but they wanted to be able to move a little bit more in the classes um, and have different groups of kids within a class doing it. So that idea of embedding in life, in our real life, is part of it. And again, for us, it's, um, you know, it's, there's lots of different teachers and so there's lots of time. And how do we get that message out to all the teachers in a competing, crazily changing world?
Can I just say one more thing? Because I think there were a couple other questions. So we, we just talked a lot about, about the suggestions kid, kids had for moving forward. In every group, every kid said they feel very grateful to attend our school.
Yes, they did.
Every one of them. And, um, so that's just a cheers to what's happening right now. But they're not saying it's, it's bad. They're just, you know what I mean? They're just looking to, I don't know. They're just incredibly grateful for being here.
We actually had a harder time getting them to think outside of the box. They were very secure in their school box, do you know what I mean? So they had a harder time thinking about what it could be. So that was, we were pushing that conversation a little bit, trying to get them to see that there might be other ways to get that learning.
Okay. It's my task to try to keep us somewhat on time. So I'm gonna take one or two more questions or comments, but then I have to move us along. So if you have further things after that, don't hesitate to email me.
Or us, yeah.
I'll get responses from Eric. Kim?
And the parents' role and how parents would access even what's currently happening. Is that, and I'm gonna say that at risk of being a senior parent who maybe should have known this, but I don't think I do. And I don't think she knows if I'm supposed to know, so.
So, uh, uh, that's one of the pieces that our tool currently doesn't have as a parent portal. And, uh, that is, uh, they're working on a beta version of that and we're gonna be testing that. So they expect that to come out in the early summer. So that should be up and running for next year. There is a process for, um, there was a process that was sent out to have advisors at the, uh, at the high school share out, um, pages at particular moments in time. Um, and there is a way to do that. Like students should have emailed pages home to parents at certain times. So.
It's the checks and balances kind of.
That's the, that's that accountability piece that I was.
So we, in the summer work we did last summer, um, without students, which was bad, we should have had students here last summer. Uh, we had some checks and balances in there so that by October, parents would know that what the PLPs. We had communications that went out from the district, from each of the schools. So there was a lot of different messaging that Eric was sort of getting to people. And then at certain points in the year, it was around conference time in March and then also, um, in the fall to begin to send out or share with their parents. The hard part was, we can't tell whether that actually happened or not. So that's where as a parent, it may just not have happened.
Do you guys remember it hap-? I just want to ask because it could just be Abby. I'm just gonna say. Did you guys have that?
I feel like there, there were definitely a couple of meetings that we, we had. It, it was only ever like once a year and I definitely feel like we could benefit from, from more of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's possible. I didn't, I, I know seniors probably, as it's not required, may have, Grace, do you know?
Like share with parents?
Yeah, share with parents.
Yeah, I'm an advisor with like, um, sophomores and seniors and I feel like maybe at most they like suggested it or they like framed it as a suggestion versus like, you must do it. So like, so like, people like didn't listen.
And I know that at the end of the year, uh, just talked about this week, um, he's planning on having them go out again at the end of the year.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, well, um, last one.
So, um, speaking as a parent of a seventh grader, um, our, our shared homework last week was to actually sit together to look at his jump rope and also look at his PLP and to talk to, and to have him walk me through his personal and academic goals, talk about how the evidence that he's making progress, sort of reevaluating whether or not he keeps up with new strategies and then ways that I can support him as a parent to help him achieve his goals. And it was a really great conversation. We had a forty-five minute discussion about school, which is probably the longest my son has ever talked to me about. So, um, that's been my experience as a parent so far with this, with this tool and with this process. And, you know, it seemed like a really positive, it was a very positive experience on our.
Great. So before we move on, any comments, um, Todd?
Yeah, it, it sounded like this forum was really productive and good for the students. Is there any reason why we wouldn't want to try to engage every student at some point in a similar forum?
Uh, sure. Just a lot of students. I mean, it's just trying to figure out how to do that. Yep.
I understand it's a lot of students.
Yeah. We survey the students and we did survey at the middle level. And so we can do that in it even more easily than trying to take them out of class and have them for two hours, you know, in a setting. So, I mean, it's not, nothing we couldn't try, but it's just logistically, it's a little more difficult.
Well, you, you might be able to train teachers to.
Yep.
Or the student ambassadors, if we could get that going, they could run forums too. There would be a lot of different ways to. I agree with you though. Students need to talk to other students about PLPs. So whether it's these forums or some other type of forum, I think you're absolutely right, spot on. The kids were so excited when they ended the forums. They thought we had given them cake or something. They were really excited.
Katie?
I was just wondering if you could, if you had an idea of the number of students that you invited to those forums that were on IEPs or in special education and what type of supports are in place to allow them to understand what the PLP is and to actually, um, have access to doing so.
I believe every group was representative. Um, and on our, um, task team, we have representatives from guidance and from special education. So as we were constructing it, we were thinking about it. And Tom is one of the, the biggest, um, supporters at the high school level in how much time he gives his students and how much support he gives his students. He's really pretty stellar. So.
I just want to clarify, there were students from special education that attended the forums?
Yes. Yep.
Thanks. Okay. All right. Thank you so much. And we look forward to the continued growth, um, work in this area.
And the big idea would be to take their voice and change it up this summer.
Try to begin to think about it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen.
Okay. So the next item on our agenda is kind of a complete term, um, but to school safety. And, um, Brian, are you?
Yep. So, um, just making their way to the front of the auditorium here. Um, we are going to be joined by Chief Gary, Captain Hoag, Officer Roberto, as well as Bill Lware. Um, Bill Lware is our Director of Safety and Security for Essex Westford School District. It's a position we elevated back in, uh, July of two thousand and seventeen. And, um, Bill has been a long-serving member of our staff um, and has, um, really been able to in the last year and a half, kind of step up and become a universal resource across the district. Um, and spending, um, time in all of our buildings, including Westford and as, as needed, uh, as well as being proactive out there, as well as the other buildings. And he'll be overseeing the large investment that we're making in safety and security with the FY twenty budget. So.
So why don't you each introduce yourselves?
I'll start. I'm Bill Lware, Director of Security for the district. Spent twenty-eight years as a Burlington Police Officer, retired as a lieutenant in, uh, two thousand and started here in two thousand. And I love this place.
Uh, I'm Michael Roberto. I go by Mick. I'm the new SRO for the district. I've been a police officer with SXPD for a little over six years now. Um, and I've only, you know, been in the position for a little over a week. And so far, things have been absolutely wonderful and everybody I've met so far has been great. So I'm really looking forward to, to working with everybody in the school district and, and seeing what changes and improvements we can make.
And my name is Ron Hoag. I'm a captain with the Police Department here in Essex. Um, I'm in my twenty-eighth year in law enforcement now. Um, I'm on my second stint with SXPD, uh, having started my second one back in July after the chief, uh, stole me away from St. Albans. Um, and, uh, so far, we've been, uh, we've been making some great strides with the school district and it's been great working with everybody here. So. Along with more.
Hi, and I'm Rick Gary. I'm the Chief of Essex. I've been with SXPD for about thirty-one years. Started as a dispatcher and kind of made my way up through. So for the last year, we've been working on, Ron and I have been working on reevaluating. As you know, Kurt McGlinnis, uh, our School Resource Officer, had been with us for thirty-something years, retired. And so part of that was us, uh, understanding what the job was, reevaluating it and determining where we need to be in the next five years, ten years, and how better to provide safety and security in our school. So that's what we're gonna talk a little bit about.
Great.
So, um, that actually kicks us off well. Um, the, the chief has, um, had an opportunity to engage with the Select Board and the Village Trustees recently, and I wanted him to have that same opportunity to address the school board. As you know, um, we've been working really, uh, really closely and, uh, fairly quickly to, to start to assemble this new vision of a school resource officer and, and reimagining what it could be. Um, and spent some time at the Governor's Conference, learning what some of the models are around the state. And, uh, Beth and I are, are really committed that this, while it, it does have an outward facing and immediate impression of safety and security, it goes a long way towards our goal of building relationships. And we think that a really, a positive, deep relationship with law enforcement is going to give, um, overall safety to our community. You recall, we ran a safety forum, um, in the cafeteria last year. And it was, it was really impactful to me as we talked about what we want to do to make our school safe, that through the little, um, mentimeter, um, the word belonging came up as the primary thing that we can do. It wasn't metal detectors, it wasn't more bars, or it wasn't this and that. It was that sense. If we can create relationship and create a sense of belonging, we have the benefit of being a much safer community. So. Um, but why don't I, why don't I let the chief share the vision that, that, uh, they have and that we fully are embracing? And then we can also kind of talk some about the Public and School Safety Committee that we have. And then certainly a little bit more from Mick if he has some more background to share with us.
So historically, uh, Essex is actually, actually maybe the first ones in the state to have a school resource officer. They weren't called school resource officers back then. Um, so we've had one and funded one through taxpayer support for years. It comes out of the Police Department. Uh, and basically that role, uh, back in the day, it was there. Uh, for a while, it went to, um, Project Northland was one of the programs. And a lot of that was drug resistance education back in the day, twenty-five years ago. Um, and we still do some of that, but in, in looking at how school resource officers are being used, talking about building relationships in community, uh, as we, for the last year, have been looking at what we're doing. Kurt used to spend ninety percent of his time teaching classes in the classroom. And so the problem is, is when we had problems with student, he was locked into the classroom, teaching classes. We actually had to bring other officers off the road to come and assist when we had issues. Um, and what we've discovered and what we're looking at at other models, Seth Burlington has a really successful model, um, is we need to kind of pull that officer out of that teaching mode, put them more into being a fabric of the community. Not that they won't be available to teach, teach health classes, teach drug safety laws, uh, traffic safety, that type of stuff. But we don't want them locked into a specific, um, classroom where they can't leave if they're needed somewhere else. Um, it, looking at some of the other models, we're thinking that we need three school resource officers in the next five years approximately, uh, in order to cover Essex well. We think we need one here at the high school and we think we need one for town schools and village schools that would rotate around. And if we needed them, we could move them, if we had a problem in one area, we could move them to one school. But the goal is, is to have those officers visiting the school, being part of the classrooms, being part of the sporting events, um, being part of the community, building those relationships. Instead of just being the classroom teacher that comes and teaches the class, then runs to the next school and teaches the class over there, and then runs to the next school and teaches the class. So part of what we're looking at is we've got one that the, that the PD funds. When Kurt left, it took us a little while to get up to speed. Um, Mick is our new school resource officer and in speaking with the district and starting to look at some of the numbers about where, where potentially we have issues or where potentially across the nation, we may see some of these issues. It made sense that our, when we replaced him, that their first school resource officer would actually come here to the high school. Our intent is, you have money in the, in your budget this year to, uh, what we've talked with the district about is, is maybe a cost sharing model. What we're hoping to do is maybe over a period of time is share that cost with the school, uh, to eventually get to those three. Um, so what I'm hoping was the, with the piece that may be in the budget this year, that the PD, I've got some unfunded or some positions that haven't been filled, that we actually, hopefully will be able to put another school resource officer in the graded schools this fall, if everything works successfully. So we'll actually go to two, um, if we can get all that to work. Uh, initially, a second officer would rotate between the village schools and town schools like we're doing now. And then eventually the goal would be is to get that third officer mostly in village schools, in town schools, and to help with Westford a little bit. Westford already has state police that are up there, but we'd work in connection with them. Again, the goal is, is not pulling staff off the road that's dealing with burglaries and traffic issues, but to have people that are specialists dealing with juvenile issues, knowing school rules. I have a problem when a, one of my regular officers comes over here and they don't know what the school rules are and they're not all completely up to speed on juvenile law. We want to make our school resource officers experts. Where the students feel comfortable with them, they work well with the administration. So that's kind of what we're shooting for. Uh, again, what we're hoping is maybe in the next five years, we could get to that three, but I'd at least like to get us up to two. We feel that we need a presence here. We need a cruiser out front of the school. We want folks to let them know that we're here and we're around. Um, so that's, that's kind of the vision. Do you have any questions on?
Um, one thing I'm concerned about is, Westford is part of the district. It's like the primary enforcement or resource is the state police, but it's more reactionary than actually what you're envisioning as a resource officer for this, for the district. Am I not correct on that?
It, yes, it's, our, our main focus at the moment is gonna be the Essex schools because the state police do have someone up there, but it's to work with them to try to work, you know. Uh, we're initially gonna visit them also in, in our visits.
If, if I may. I was actually up there earlier today.
Through the, the road?
And ba- basically, you know, what I was explaining and I, I've, I've talked to the state police, uh, officer who works in Westford is that they're gonna be pretty much the primary up there for, for any kind of day-to-day issues. But, uh, you know, if, if there's a, a big event that, you know, if there's a big emergency that's going on, we're the, we're the closest people here. We would be going no matter what. And, and so the, the idea is that not only be, for me, be a liaison between, uh, the school, but also to be a liaison between the state police and, and what their plans are, to get involved in the safety plans. This way, we, as a police department, we will have an understanding of how things are gonna work, where, you know, where exits are, where, you know, how their emergency plans are, are laid out. So that, you know, if we need to, and, and because they are part of the district, we can be involved in, in helping out with the state police.
So we may be. He was there today, giving a, he got a tour and I went on the tour too.
Yes.
With so many children.
And already developed relationships with their, it was great.
So we will, we're not, we can't take over, state police technically, that's their territory. We can't investigate their crimes. So we can be a quick response to them because they've got a distance to go. So we can get there. So we can get there faster than they can. We can certainly have them as part of our rotation of where we're rotating around, but we're not going to, we're not going to take over criminal investigations for them up there. Does that make, does that answer your question?
Well, I think I was more seeking to address the presence or the program structure that you're going to have in place within the schools. And I'm not really hearing any structure concerning Westford, since they are part of the District. I certainly appreciate jurisdiction issues with the state police being the primary responders. But I don't believe their presence is there other than reactionary. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, please.
No. What I would say is, our intent is to rotate, once we get up to speed, School Resource Officers there. I'd love to have four.
Sure.
I'd love to have one for the village, one for the town. It comes down to funding. So, I mean, again, if Westford could support that, or we can, however we can work that out. Basically, we've got to balance the number of schools in the town, in the village, and up there. It would be part of our rotation. But unlike, unlike the School Resource Officer here at the high school, that's basically going to be assigned here.
Right.
The ones working at the other schools are kind of going to bounce between those schools of which Westford would be part of that.
Okay, thank you.
I think you might have just answered in the last piece, that outside of the high school, where there's the critical mass and one person assigned, as we are, you're building that staff, and it's supporting our K eight schools, Westford is considered in that for the connections, relationships, instruction, or education piece of it?
So I can, yeah, our School Resource Officer is going to be up there at the school, doing visits, doing, yeah.
Sure. We've also, I'm really happy with the great assistance from SXPD. Our school and community safety meetings now are having the attendance from state police, as well as the Fairfax Rescue. Those were never, I mean, we've run those meetings for years and never had that attendance. So, I mean, we are, while we may not be perfect, and it may not be identical across the board, what we've infused is a level of coordination and now presence that just has, just never been there.
Well, that's wonderful.
As well as Bill's involvement as well.
Hi. Kelly?
Just one little thing to think about as you're thinking about expanding the staff with shared costs between the Police Department and the District in future years, is building relationships through trying. I know it's hard because of the makeup of the Police Academy graduates and what have you, but trying hard to be representative in hiring, also of women and minorities. Because I know, at one point, a woman firefighter came into my daughter's class, and it was just like huge for her. She's like, I want to be a firefighter. And that built much more of a relationship for her with public safety officers than being like, oh, you know, firefighters are big, strong men. Like, I don't see myself as a firefighter. So just something to think about.
So we do have a couple of female officers. Our School Safety Resource Officer is a voluntary assignment. We won't force anybody into it. Linda Carey, I don't know if you remember Linda from years past, was one of our School Resource Officers. Diana Marinowitz, that actually works for you now as a security person. Who is right there, is one of our old School Resource Officers that's here with you now. So any opportunity that we get, but what we don't do is we don't force people that don't want to do that job. I can tell you, in this case, we asked out, and we only had two people that asked for it at this time. But we would certainly make it open to anybody and try to be as diverse as possible, because I agree with you, is being able to, being able to reach out to anyone that we can and being able to show those diversities is important.
I have a question based upon Andre's question. So there's shared funding from the SXPD with the school district.
Starting with next year, if the budget passes.
Next year. So if Westford wanted to be involved with the funding mechanism and have a Resource Officer there that is also working with us, is there a way of working towards that in the next few years?
The challenge, Marla, is SXPD doesn't have jurisdiction over Westford, the state police do.
So there's a series, there's definitely a series of work and of capacity and of focus that is SRO-oriented, but is not about the jurisdictional, law enforcement jurisdiction. There's some that definitely is.
Yep.
And then there's some that isn't. You know, I would, and I've said this before, you know, that everyone in Westford who's in eighth grade is going to be an Essex High student next year. So part of Nick's responsibility is to get to know the next group of Essex High students. So going out there, being there, available, if they have an event, to be visible, that's definitely there, to be available to talk to health classes, to address, I know that you're going into a class here to talk about Miranda rights and so forth. So we can do that. But he'll also be involved when there is a juvenile crime that's been committed or being investigated. And that's really when he's operating in this jurisdictional world. And in that case, what we'd want to do is call in the state police and say, hey, I've got this information, let me share it with you, why don't you take jurisdictional authority? Does that make sense a little bit?
Penn?
Could I get an idea for, like, just like a typical day for you? I just, I get an idea, obviously, you're in teaching some classes, you know, and a School Resource Officer is going to do that. But like, I just, I guess I'm having some, not really trouble, but I would like to learn more about, you know, what's handled by our school security, what's going to necessarily need you. So if you go into a school at eight AM, what does your day look like?
Well, that's actually kind of a good question. I haven't quite been able to answer that yet, and I haven't quite had a typical day so far. Like I said, a little over a week.
Never will.
Yes, exactly. I mean, really, I envision that I will be there to supplement security. There are some things that, you know, security deals with on a day-to-day basis that doesn't need a police officer. And by getting a police officer involved, may change the dynamic of these situations. But basically, you know, I'm there to, you know, be a presence. You know, like we said, having a car out front, walking around in the hallways, you know, popping into classes if they have questions. I can tell you that, you know, it's happened where I was walking down the hall and a kid stopped me the other day saying, hey, there's an empty bottle of alcohol in one of the trashcans. Just, you know, wanted you to know. And so basically, to be literally a resource for both the students and the teachers and the staff, if they have an issue, if something comes up where they don't, they won't necessarily see a security officer wandering, you know, walking around through the halls, they'll see me, and then they can use me to assist them with whatever they, whatever they need. And like you said, I'm already scheduled to pop into a couple of classes in the next couple of weeks and answer questions about, you know, Miranda rights and accused, you know, rights of the accused persons, and just kind of give people a feel for, or give the students a feel for what it is I do, you know, and be able to have somebody they can talk to that can answer those kind of questions that may not be able to get during a regular day-to-day.
So in a good way? Like, your presence is very much preventative rather than it is, hopefully, reactionary towards?
Absolutely. And I think ideally, you know, if I never have to react to a situation, I think that I will have done a perfect job. But obviously, you know, that's not going to happen. But definitely, it would be more of a preventative situation than...
Somewhere within, like, after we get his feet underneath him, you know, give him like three weeks. You know, he'll also be working in trying to raise the bar in our crisis response and in our safety teams. And, you know, as we go through all that work and make all of our investments that we plan to next year, well, certainly, it's, we have an incredible relationship. I'm not sure if every school district is as blessed as we are to just have such a partnership. But it just gives us one more go-to person, as well as the captain and as well as the chief, to say, well, what do you think about this? What would this be? Or could you come in and help us do a tabletop exercise? What do you think about this evacuation concept that we have? Does this make sense to you?
And, I mean, we, when I was up in Westford, at the Westford School today, you know, that's exactly what we were talking about. We were going over safety plans, and they were giving me updates on what the planned upgrades to their safety plans are. And I'm going to go up and talk with, you know, the property manager and the facilities manager, to really kind of hammer out some details and offer some advice, you know, as far as how to deal with problems and evacuation plans and safety plans. So that's my whole, that's my whole game.
So can I just, can I just add? Or you go ahead?
If I may add, you know, you mentioned
Yeah, please.
...security versus our law enforcement, School Resource Officer. The nice thing is that in the almost nineteen years I've been here now, Essex Schools have had a wonderful relationship with SXPD and law enforcement, the state police. And because of my prior background, we have the same mentality, for lack of a better word. Cops think differently from civilians. That's neither right nor wrong, but it's a different perspective that we bring to the school setting. And it's all about relationship building. And I'll tell you right up front, Mick's only been here for a short time, I'm getting a tremendous amount of feedback from students and faculty and staff of what a great guy he is. And they say, well, he's not your usual cop. So it was so important, and I had some concern about who would be assigned here, because police have different types of attitudes throughout any organization. Each department has its own culture. Burlington is different from Essex. But when I found out it was going to be Mick, I was really pleased, because number one, he's not a cowboy cop. You don't want that in a school setting, I'll be really candid with you. He's sensitive, he's braggarious, he gets out there. And, you know, I had to do some soul searching myself, because I didn't want to reach a point in my career where I would be intimidated by this new young kid coming in and having maybe better ideas than I have. Well, I've been around the block a long, long time, and I don't know everything. I can tell you that right up front. And law enforcement is changing so rapidly, and he's bringing new ideas, and that's really important. And the same thing with Captain Hoag. Couldn't get a better guy here. He reminded me that I was one of his instructors at the Police Academy who went through.
Learn from the best.
It was a long time ago. So we're really, really fortunate. I can't say enough good things. It's a tremendous relationship.
I just wanted to add to that, that a lot of people think of an SRO's job as primarily security and enforcement. And that is a, I don't want to say a small part, but that is not the major part that we are going to see the big benefits out of. And we've already talked about that with relationship building. And having someone who can contact a police officer and meet them in something other than an enforcement situation is huge for us and for the school district. We want, we want kids to come to him like they would a guidance counselor. We want them to see him as somebody who's here to protect them, but also as someone that they can count on for advice or something like that, that will help them get through the day. And that's, and he's going to be a resource for us as a Police Department, because he will be our eyes and ears here at the, at the, at the school, and hopefully be able to head off some of the problems that we see on the street that are related to things that go on here at the school. So those are just some of the things that we would like him to be doing here, so.
One more thing.
Can I get some clarification? There's been some discussion about shared costs, but as we're all one district, we are, in essence, sharing the total cost. Were you referring to municipality sharing the costs?
Right.
For Westford? Or, because the school district, in essence, will be picking up...
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right, Andre. There isn't, there really isn't a Westford for us as an Essex Westford School District. And our resources are, what we're doing basically is, we're leaning into the equation of having multiple SROs. So we have a long history in the community of having one. We've seen a lot of benefit of having at least two, if not the three that's envisioned. And then that rotation around, I could see us doing an evacuation drill up in Westford and having all our SROs there, having Bill there, having some other administrators. And we don't treat, it's just one of our schools. So the cost sharing is that we're leaning into the cost of having more than one, and part of it is just that we see the benefit for our school community.
Right, no, I wanted to clarify that, because it was being tossed out at sharing costs, and that's not necessarily correct.
But we're sharing costs with them.
That's correct.
Yes.
And I think we've brought, in some ways, I mean, I know it's really, I mean, the state police have an insurmountable task of trying to be everywhere at the same time with their current staffing and so forth. But I think that as they're attending monthly meetings with all our principals, and they're seeing the faces, and we're around, and Fairfax Rescue's there, I think we're creating a deeper relationship with them as well. And they see things that Westford's doing, because it's part of Essex Westford School District, that they want to bring to Belvedere and Hyde Park and other rural schools that face some of the same challenges.
Okay, I'm going to move us along. Did you want to talk about the active threat?
Yes.
Before we go through...
Yes. So I just wanted to bring up that one of our pieces of work this year as a school district working with SXPD, a couple of things have evolved. One is that we have established a regular meeting where our entire leadership, including from principals to directors, are attending a monthly meeting now on the third Wednesday of every month. That is, that was an additional meeting to all our leaderships before, and now it's embedded. Beth and I follow that meeting up with our traditional two and a half hours after that. What that's done for us is allow us to start to move forward some things that have been under discussion for quite some time. And for a while, we were on board, where we thought everyone else was, was to implement ALICE, which is a dynamic response situation to an active threat. As we got through into the month of December, and also as the captain came on, we have adjusted that to a run, hide, fight kind of concept. We're bringing in this procedure of an active threat procedure, and it's in its sort of third draft right now. We'll go back to the Community School Safety Group and to the leadership team, and then we'll map out how we'll communicate, because obviously, these are, these are difficult conversations. We don't, we don't want to necessarily concern and raise anxiety, but at the same time, we don't want to not be prepared. And unfortunately, this is the society we live in, that we need to prepare for these things. So the board will be seeing that as a procedure coming up, as it works its way back through the committee and through the leadership. And that's been great work. I mean, it's really, I feel like we're really being supported and informed of what this means, and then I think you'll see a really strong partnership in rolling it out. And I wouldn't be surprised if this just, I know colleges and universities are adopting it, the state office buildings are adopting it, and others are, that this is now, the, I think the latest writing of it talks about reactive situational awareness, which is that sort of how do we respond to an active threat? But there's also the proactive situational awareness that we'll be hitting hard next year with the see something, say something aspect of it, that Vermont NEA has partnered with the state police on. So this is, this is kind of where we're going for the next foreseeable future, is to try to bring this up as a life skill, that both as an employer, a major employer in this community, as well as the educational foundation in this community, we need that situational awareness built, not just for today, but for a lifetime.
Questions.
Laura? I think kind of going off of a little bit of what Brian said, is that I feel like coming from a student's perspective, is that you being here is kind of like saying there is a possibility of a threat, you know, like that's what we're preparing for. And I think that's kind of scary for a lot of kids. And, you know, like, the first week that you were here, I was hearing a lot of, a lot of kids saying, you know, like, oh my God, he has a gun. And like, do you think he's going to pepper spray someone, like tase them? And, you know, I feel like, you know, being comfortable with, with a person and being able to go to a person is one thing, and then being comfortable with having a gun in a school.
And I absolutely, I completely understand where people are. The fact of the matter is, that's my job, you know? I hope with all my heart that I never, ever have to respond to a threat like that in the school. But the unfortunate, like Brian said, is that this is kind of the society we live in. And, you know, everybody kind of goes to the worst-case scenario where, you know, there's a person in the school, you know, causing harm to people on a mass scale. But the reality is that it, I don't, it doesn't necessarily have to be something like that. It could be a student who's having, you know, the worst day of their life and... and is trying to harm themselves or trying to harm others. It could be an upset parent, it could be anything. And, and yes, I, you know, I have weapons, these are, those are tools for my job. People are out on the street, you know, we're out on the streets every day with these weapons, and we never hope to, hope to use them. But they're there precisely to, to ensure that we can stop the threat before it happens and to protect people, you know, if a threat does occur. And, and I've, I've encouraged people to, to talk to me about it, and, you know, and, and I encourage, you know, if you know anybody, if you ever want to chat with me, feel free. And I, I've been telling that to everybody, you know, all the classes I've been into. I'm a pretty friendly guy, and, and I'll be more than happy to ask, answer any questions you have, and any concerns, really. Because it's something new. You know, you guys haven't had anybody in the school every day walking around with, with a firearm. And, and that can be absolutely very scary, especially considering, and I know that there are some people who are still, rightfully so, kind of freaked out about what happened from the swatting incident a couple of years ago. And I, I get that a hundred percent. I was here the day after that incident, I was in the school. We had actually had to clear the school a second time that night after the incident because we found some open windows. And so, myself and another officer spent probably almost three hours clearing the whole school, making sure that there wasn't any further threats that would be there. And then we stayed over the next, the next day till about, I'd say, eleven o'clock or so in the morning. And I, we were sitting down with, with students, and they had, they had concerns. And there were some students that were out in the hallways when the lockdown occurred, and they had guns pointed at them. And that's awful. I could not imagine what that must have been like. But we were able to, to talk with them and, and kind of explain the processes. And that's my hope, is that, you know, there's kind of a lot of confusing and concerning stuff going on with, for some people. And my hope is that I can provide the, the perspective that, you know, hey, this is why we're doing things this way. This is why I walk around with a, with a firearm, you know, with, with the other tools that I have on, on my person.
And I think it's new. You're both gonna get used to it. Our school resource officers have always been in uniform in the graded schools, and they're just like a teacher that's up there. So, I think it's just gonna take time for people to get used to that it's a uniformed officer in this room. But certainly, if you have questions or concerns, happy to. But that's part of what they are, is they're here to protect you, and they have to have the tools that they need in order to be able to protect you when they're here.
I, I was just wondering if you guys had any, any like plans about, you know, maybe like a school assembly or something where you could say something like that to the school, or, or, you know?
Yeah, I don't think we have any plans, but, you know, absolutely. I mean, I would be more than happy to, even if it was, you know, if I was coming to different classes and, and having, you know, some time during, during some of the class blocks, to be able to sit down and, and kind of answer those kind of questions. I would be more than happy to do that. I think that, that'd be great.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion.
Yeah, absolutely.
To follow up on that, like, I think it's important to be aware that police officers with guns is like a way better situation than the policies that I've heard promoted in other parts of our country about teachers with guns. Police officers have a lot of training, so it's like part of the uniform. I guess, I was thinking about the other end of this, the active threat procedure. I don't know a lot about the details, but I hope as we're developing this that we're sensitive to the needs of people in our community who may be fully committed to nonviolence. There may be students and teachers and other staff members who either because of having been a victim of violence or because of their religious or philosophical principles can stand in front of a weapon but can't themselves undertake an act of violence. So, that fight piece is gonna need a lot of explanation. So, what do you do if you are-
Yeah.
-nonviolent?
Yeah, it's a good point. I think we're, we're recognizing we're going right back to the beginning of when we started lockdown drills. I mean, those have become almost commonplace for us right now. While I still would say we're not fully understanding what the impact is socially and emotionally on our students to practice preparation of, of active threat like that. But, I mean, we are going back where their questions are being generated and people want to know. And some of it is trying to know to, to understand the feelings that it emotes, you know, when we start talking about these situations. And while we talk about high schools having a higher predominance being in the news, we know that it's not exclusive, right? In our own community, it was our elementary school that has had a tragedy. So, it, it will, it will be a difficult process for us, and I think we've got to be slow and intentional and responsive to the needs that it brings up. I, I do also want to point out, and I pointed out with the Essex Reporter and to the chief, I, I know for a fact there are, there are students and, and potentially staff who, who have not had a positive relationship with law enforcement. They may be coming from other cultures where law enforcement is, they have experiences or they, they've seen things. And, and while we have to be really cognizant of the anxiety that it can create, it, this is really, this is, this is the path. You know, this is, meeting someone like a, like a Mick is a, is a chance for somebody to, to create potentially a different, a different experience. So, but I sat at that, the, the meeting that we had, and there was a student that said, you know, when, when the hundred and twenty-five police officers show up, I'm not feeling safer. So, I mean, we have to recognize that that is a lived experience, and we need to try to be embracing that each day to figure out what to do with it.
Okay, I have two hands over here. I'll do those two, and then I think we have to move on to the memorandum.
And I actually really sorry, so I apologize, but I did want to just say that, you know, I think we've all read kind of some of the stories about schools that have really gone all in on more active, active shooter training for schools and for students. And it sometimes has led to actually creating PTSD and some, and some really, you know, anxiety in, in the students. So, as we expand our efforts, I just hope that we're being really thoughtful about the psychological impacts on students that this could have if we expand our, our training and our preparations. Is John in favor of, but I just want us to be really thinking about that piece.
And I just wanted to, to thank you, this, the Voices for Education work that we've been doing over the past three years. We've invited you, your department, and you've been very receptive about being part of a community effort to have these conversations around equity and some of the harder-to-have conversations. Your presence there has been really important to, just to, to model that you're part of the conversation and, and makes it more likely that people, that we can, we can, as a community, school, and, and municipalities, and the police department, and Community Justice Center, and partners can work together to, to make, to feel safer. And so, I thank you for being part of those community efforts and building those relationships between the schools and the police department.
No, no, I just want to- I said they riddled us too. You're screwing me up.
I was just gonna say, first of all, I want to thank you behalf of the community. You're doing a great job. And I also wanted to mention Bill. I've worked with Bill for a long time after Columbine. We worked together, he worked with the board. We came up with an audit of the school, the first audit. And it was invaluable, the, the numbers of exposures that it, it showed. Over the years, we gradually closed a lot of those loopholes and exposures. So, if, if you as a team want to bring forth any concerns and have recommendations for major audits or whatever, things that we need to be supporting and thinking about, I really would appreciate your feedback. So, thanks again.
Thank you.
That's a nice thing now. It's really your team effort.
Yeah.
We are a team, and I think we can do an awful lot. We're going from, as Brian always tells me, we're going from security one point O to two point O, and we're refining that security here for all the schools in our district.
I just wanted to say for students' sake, aging myself, but when I was in first grade, we had to go down into the basement of the school, and it was bomb shelter time. Then, high school, Vietnam War and all the protests going on, even in Vermont. It was, it was difficult, it was kind of scary. And I think honestly, the sooner you can get a third resource officer, I highly encourage it because when you get with younger children and they get comfortable with going to you, it's gonna be different than what maybe a freshman, sophomore, junior, senior feels like. So, I think the younger we can start with, the better for the future.
Yeah.
So, that's, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, thanks, let's move on to the memorandum of understanding. We are being asked to approve this.
Yeah, so there's a, we're, we're asking that you accept the memorandum of understanding with the Essex Police Department regarding the school resource officer for the remainder of this school year. We'll actually, we're, we're probably just about ready to start work on the next one, but this is just for this year. And you recall, we've never had a memorandum of understanding before. We've had a school resource officer for thirty years in the district at some building, and we haven't had a formalized. I really think that, you know, as the captain came down and, and as the chief came in, we all sort of all looked at each other and said, yeah, we need this, let's, let's get it so it's official. So, it's for the remainder of this year, and you're authorizing the superintendent to execute the agreement on behalf of the district.
Okay, so, let's get a motion and then-
I'll make the motion.
Okay, so, Andre makes a motion to authorize the superintendent to execute this memorandum of understanding on behalf of the district. What questions or comments do folks have? Unscheduled.
I'm sorry, just, was this based, I'm so sorry, I didn't mean to ruin it. I was just wondering, like, because we've never had one before, did we use a format from somebody else?
Yeah.
Do you guys help inform it?
Primary allegiances to the, a format that was used with B F A.
Right.
Added our counsel-
We weren't reinventing the wheel.
No, our legal counsels reviewed it. And then we added the duties to it, and I'm sure we probably will continue to refine it and improve on it, but-
We, we made some small modifications to it because of the situation that we have here, but that's basically it, yeah.
Great, thank you.
I do have one comment. I do appreciate the, the details that went into it. It was very well articulated and spelled out the authority and delineation, and I appreciate that.
I can't claim all, claim all of that because Brian did a lot of it.
Brian was the author.
Natasha did it.
We kind of always-
She's not here.
The school resource officers is here, and we kind of give them direction. And so, when we talked to Brian about replacing the new one, that was one of the conversations is, how about some understanding of what we expect from your officer and what you expect there?
Absolutely.
And so, I think it's a beautiful idea. We're able to borrow some language, and I think it helps us, and we can make it, tweak it as we need it in the future. But it gives us some guidance.
If I can make one more comment, going back to what the lady over, over here said about, about the younger kids, I, I think one of the, one of the benefits that we're going to ride on for the next couple of years, hopefully, is the, is the work that Kurt McGlinnis did with all of the schools and, and seeing those, seeing all those people cheering for him. I mean, he made an impact on a lot of kids, and, and we're gonna see that hopefully come through high school in the next few years, and hopefully, we can continue that once we get another school resource officer who can, who can do those types of things in those schools.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you all for being here. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the drug and alcohol testing policy. Brian, could you point out whether there's anything different in this policy?
Yeah, this sentence right here. So, the mandatory policy from the V S B A was a great start, but the benefit of having a ten-year veteran in transportation management is that he also knows the intricacies of all the federal law that goes into it. So, the federal law is really dependent upon having a number of these sort of like mandatory procedures. So, what we've added is this policy and the transportation procedures shall constitute our drug and alcohol testing program for transportation employees. That sort of brings us into compliance. And then also shared with the board were all the various procedures that went into it. So, and you can see that the procedures were shared for information purposes, but they are very descriptive. And then we've also contracted with a testing agency. So, we have an authorized testing agency in which that does the, both the random and the, the mandatory testing.
Okay, questions about the policy? Keely?
So, I have a lot of questions, but the first one that's specific about the change to the policy, I feel like the same information is stated in the first paragraph of the procedures in a way that sounds more like normal policy language to me. And I'm wondering why that was like definition of what we mean by program and like how it complies with the law, why that isn't in the policy? Like, I don't, the way the policy now reads, like, it has this extra sentence, but there's not really any clear indication of why we needed this extra sentence. But all that indication is there in the first two paragraphs of the procedures.
Interesting. Yeah.
So, you're asking why it's not in policy?
Right, why not take this purpose statement and put that in the policy instead of this one sentence that comes out of nowhere?
Sure. I mean, at first reading, we could just make it, we could just make it a, I mean, if that's the, if that's the will of the board-
There isn't a policy committee anymore, but I'm just noting that-
Well, I guess, I guess my question to Beth earlier today was, why aren't we using the sentence that was suggested in organizational notes, which refers to everything? So, the related, related everything is in that one sentence. So, you know all the policies and procedures that are at the time. A portion of this are, are listed, so you don't have to relate to anything, it's right there. So, I would add that to Keely's question.
So, I think two items are on the table. One is a modification of the thing at first reading. The second answer is the difference between the org notes and what's written here in the policy is that what's in the policy eliminates the numerical coding of the procedures and just relates, and just refers to them as transportation procedures in case that as we go through a process of making our policies and procedures more user-friendly and able to be done, that we, you know, you, there is a typical sense of trying to keep policy so that it is timeless, so that it's one of the reasons why we pull out references and restate law because law can change. We just now assume that we're going to be lawful and in compliance with state law. So, we can do both. I guess it's just up to the board at first reading what the interest is to modify the recommended, and, and whether the modifications are necessary or just desired.
And if we did use this sentence, "transportation procedures", to a reasonable reader would refer to "our transportation policy and related procedures", whereas what we mean here is "this policy and its related procedures", not "transportation procedures", which is-
Right.
A difference that I've-
So, I like that language, Keely. So, I, I have to say, Diane, I don't like the idea of putting the procedure numbers in because I think we could, over time, change how we code them. So, I think the second question for us is, how do people feel about Keely's idea that we put the first two paragraphs of the first procedure into the policy? What do people think?
I don't think we needed the language about where you can find copies of the law in the policy, but the other part seems to be kind of what we're trying to say. in the policy, but the other part seems to be kind of what we're trying to say with that final sentence.
So are you talking about replacing that sentence?
Yes, because...
In which case we don't have to worry about reliving it. Okay.
Just get rid of the sentence. Sure. So, yeah, only to the part like as amended. So that first sentence of paragraph two?
This one?
So that sentence and then the following sentence together give the context for like why we're saying it constitutes a program.
So loaded.
How are we going to know what these procedures are?
Policy before and its procedures and attachments, or this policy and its attached procedures? Companied or something? Companied procedures?
Related?
Related.
It's related, however.
Why is this?
I don't know. We can worry about it.
Okay. So... Can you, can you scroll?
Up.
Okay. So we've replaced the whole policy?
We replaced, we took that last sentence off and added these sentences from the very beginning of the...
Okay.
Procedures.
I think policy before and its related procedures, since we're not in the procedures right now.
Yep. What do folks think? Does that look good?
Yeah.
Okay. This is first reading.
Yep.
So it doesn't require action, correct?
Right.
I did have further questions about the procedures.
Our, our resident expert is neither Beth nor I.
But I mean, could I flag areas for...
Yeah, absolutely.
Want to send them to me and pass them along?
Okay.
And I'll make sure the questions and responses go to everyone.
Thanks, because I feel like there's a lot of, like, I think this probably works for people administering the procedures.
Yeah.
But from the perspective of a transportation employee, it would be really unclear whether or not you can take medical marijuana.
Gotcha.
Like, that would be incredibly unclear from this.
We are developing, as part of the overall work that we're doing, we, we're developing a transportation employee manual, because there's so many just very unique things that go to transportation employees. So what we can do is share that with you as well, and we'll see where we, where there might be a place where we, we could just connect them better.
I'll just send Martha the part where I highlighted the sentences that I think are internally confusing.
The other part is that this was a boilerplate from the company we've hired, so definitely when we both looked through it, we like redlined it, and then Jamie came back and said like, um...
No, we can't do that.
So there's a little of that, but, you know, it also, at some point, we said, okay, Jamie, you're, you're...
We tried to make it clear.
You be you, Jamie. So that would be helpful to have it come through.
There's many of our policies that I think currently the difference between federal and state law about drugs is going to need some review.
Be a conflict, yeah.
Especially on overrides.
Okay. Great. Let's move along into the group metering.
Yes.
Brian, you're probably on tonight.
Yeah, he's, he's got the whole meeting.
So as I explained in the notes, it's been, over the last year, pretty quickly in coming on board, we began to meet with a company, Green Lantern Solar. They're headquartered out of Waterbury. They have done and are now currently the net metering group that the village and the town did agreements with. So that was partly how they came to be with us. They've done three extensive projects in looking at our consumption, looking at our capabilities and their capabilities, and marrying them together. And we are nearing a point where we will have a full and final net solar agreement that would be, be ready to execute. The biggest part was to negotiate the discount. So we, the credits will be retired, the, what they're called is the RECs. Those will be retired by Green Mountain Power, which goes towards Green Mountain Power's effort to get to a certain amount of renewable energy by 2025, I think it is. So we are assisting in that process. But basically what we're doing is changing our power company to a good degree, and what we get is nearly a guaranteed benefit of a discount on what that power consumption cost was, and we've been able to negotiate a really attractive rate for this round of solar work, north of 12%. So if you look, what I shared with the board was, this is, the high school will have, because of its size, will have its own dedicated solar project, and then we'll work in the super, a super group to take the rest of them. So these are all the buildings in EWSD, including the administrative buildings, natural resources, Westford, all the schools in the town and village. So it's a total package, comprehensive, and then it goes through, you can see that it will be about 1.8 million kilowatt hours of consumption that will be offsetting. And then the cash value, this is the, the combined savings in year one will be $43,000. That 43 stays pretty steady, starts to climb, and by the time we get to complete the 10th year of this agreement, we will have saved about $465,000 in costs. And again, I think that this is partly a promise of merger, because we've been able to look at this completely comprehensively and then be able to, because we're at such a large scale, we've been able to impress greater discounts than if we had been smaller scale. We'll also continue to utilize the smaller solar projects that have been implemented within the district and be able to move those to some secondary meters and be able to keep having that generation of power. So there's, there's solar at Essex Middle School, there's solar at the Prairie Field, and there's solar at Essex High School. Those are all fairly small generations right now, but we can offset them, so we won't lose any of their, their credits.
Okay.
Marla first.
I don't know who that's... All right, your turn.
Question, on our annual meeting morning, one of the questions we're asking people is to designate that money, and we were looking at, with the village and the town...
Our long-range capital.
Yes, facilities. So is this flexible enough, or are you going to have to renegotiate this agreement within 10 years? Is there anything in the agreement that's going to allow us to renegotiate?
Yes. Yeah, so we've already protected our downside. If we were to, because, so the projections all work on an 85% of our total consumption, so there's a little bit of flexibility there. If we did a large-scale energy efficiency project and began to consume less, we would still have the power consumption to offset the credits. If we go really, if something really changes, the number of buildings that we have, or energy source, or of some type like that, it is able to go in and renegotiate the contract. The value of this contract, it's a little different than ones that I've done before, I think it's a value to us, is that we're offsetting all the capital risk. We don't own, we're not leasing the land, we don't own the land that the solar is on, and we don't own the equipment. We're just under contract that they need to be producing it for our benefit. So it, it just has, it kind of takes some of that downside risk away where there could be a real big problem. That's what a lot of solar installations are running into, is pretty major problems 10, 15 years out with life of equipment or additional capital work. So we're free of that, we're under contractual. They could replace that solar with another project, and we would just still keep on operating.
Okay.
So this sunsets correct, that after so many years...
Twenty-year agreement?
Twenty-year agreement versus, some of my questions will be based on my own experience, because I have solar, and I have, I think, a 10-year rec agreement, and then after that it goes away, but then I keep the power.
Yep.
But this isn't the case, because you have a 20-year agreement, and then, like Marla was asking, it's open to renegotiate at that point. Or the other question is, at some point, I'm wondering if we also might explore maybe creating our own solar array at the high school level.
We could, we could definitely, you know, we may be a little bit more backed in in which we couldn't go after trying to create our own 1.8 kilowatt, you know, million kilowatts. There is room for us to continue to expose more solar. Honestly, these are really difficult to permit. Our buildings and location would be really difficult. This will be probably a total of, well, it's almost four full 500-kilowatt projects, which is the cap right now.
What I appreciate, we don't actually have the, the solar panels, which I think that's a 20-year, 25-year residual life.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
And we would, and if we did it, it would be, it, there would be no, there'd be no efficacy in us doing that, because one of the real benefits to make this so your ROI is real is the tax credits. So for a nonprofit to do it, you're really paying full cost.
Right.
And that full cost, and then with no depreciation ability as a nonprofit, you would, you would almost never get your return on investment like you would with a high net capital person.
Sure. Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah.
Questions? All right. So...
So this too is looking for a motion to direct administration to finalize the net meter agreements. There will actually be six of them that we'll be executing. They'll all be reviewed by legal counsel, either Visbit or the board's legal counsel, whichever one's most effective. They are the exact agreements redlined from the agreements signed by Essex Town and the Village of Essex. So we also know that that due diligence of their energy committee and the incredible insightful work that their select board does and the village trustees. I can't, I can't take credit for that. So asking...
Been a job for 24 hours.
So directing us to finalize the net meter agreement with Green Lantern Solar and then authorizing the superintendent to sign the final agreements on behalf of the district, that's the motion.
Okay. So, thank you, Liz. Can you...
I'm going to send her the language of both of the votes.
All right. Everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, aye. Thank you, Brian. This is great work. I appreciate it.
Did I miss a vote on the policy?
Okay.
It's just first reading.
First read.
No vote.
No, only second.
Second reading gets voted.
All right. So Liz, what's kind enough to do a monitoring report for us on our very first goal, to understand and monitor the impact of equity issues on the EWSD community. And thank you, Liz, and I'll turn it over to you.
So I sent it out this morning. There's a couple changes from this morning, but I'll just briefly go over it. The five bullets are the indicators that I used to evaluate where we are with this goal. The interpretation is that the board will ensure that the district and its governing board are working to identify, understand, and address inequities in our education system through transparency, accountability, and strategic investment. Compliance with this goal will be monitored regularly. So for evidence, the building equity book read that we have just finished tonight was one of the things we were looking to do. We participated in four facilitated conversations about why we're framing the, the work of the district around equity and why we're hoping that will improve the outcomes for all learners. And the board engaged deeply in the five points of that framework to get a better understanding of, of that as a, as a board, at the same time that the district was going through that board read. The Voices work, in December, we hosted a community summit that was attended by close to 80 community members and five board members. There was data gathered and themes identified, priorities made, and recommendations to the district. There's a link to those in this document. We are, the BFE continues to work closely with the district to, up to offer opportunities for engaging and learning about equity, and the plan is to revisit those recommendations and continue to work on what the community would like to see with the board and with the district. There's a partner plan, meeting plan for later this month to bring forward the community work that was identified in that, and as we all know, we're working for, together on an engagement for May 7th to introduce the community to the framework and why it's important. The third indicator was that the admin was going to be reporting on student, student data through an equity lens, and we all, the board receives regular updates from the superintendent on the implementation of the CIP, the Continuous Improvement Plan. The plan itself has a strong equity focus, and the vision is aligned with district goals to address equity-wide, equity system-wide. And additionally, the, the district is working right now on, on a new job description for Aaron Maguire. They are working on what that's going to entail, but the title is looking like it will be the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and they're working on what that will mean and how that will play out through this equity lens. We have been, the board has been asking the administration for an equity audit on how we're doing regarding some of the indicators outlined in the building equity book, specifically discipline, course offerings, participation by various groups, different data points that we've been asking for that we have yet to receive. Transportation, I added, because the community, we heard loud and clear from the community that, that they, many people in the community were feeling that the, the board and the district failed to deliver equitable services around transportation, and in response, the board requested and received transportation updates at every regularly scheduled board meeting, beginning on September 4th, and a revised student transportation policy was adopted and procedures being drafted by administration right now in an effort to provide fair and transparent information to the community around transportation. We began board evaluations after every regular meeting, starting on November 6th. Some people have, have responded to all of those. Some are better response, some are, some get none, some get many. But we have been looking at those, and I pulled out the ones that related to equity in particular. So around equity, the equity audit, we've got questions about when we're, when the board will receive that requested data. We've got questions around our governor, governance structure, and what will best allow us to ensure the equity framework is aligned with our policies and procedures. Will that be policy governance, good governance? When will we make that decision, and what will that look like? Concerns about one community, who are my constituents, and the idea of voting at large to get towards that one community ideas are, were comments that came up around equity. Student representatives, we are constantly trying to make it a better experience for the students and for the board. So how can mentoring be improved to elevate student voice and empowerment, so they know their, what they can and cannot do, and what their roles and responsibilities are? And how can our district, building leadership, administration, and board be more supportive and responsive to student requests for agency and their own educational experience? And then finally, board meetings, and I'm not sure this belongs here, because it's not exactly equity, but there were comments about the way we behave as a board ourselves and about respect to each other and the way we treat visitors to be heard. So I put it there because it's about fairness to each other, but it's, it's not exactly the same as the others in terms of how the board is doing with equity. But I put it there, we can decide if we want it to stay in the report, if you think it belongs elsewhere. Through the evaluation, there were a lot of comments about, about visitors to be heard and that we could be more welcoming and do it in a more inclusive way, so we might want to spend some time thinking about that. And then lots of comments about airtime amongst board members, and some people getting, speaking all the time, and other people not at all, and, and as a board, just to be aware of that dynamic that's at play. So for compliance, based on the interpretation of the goal and the evidence presented here, the board is in partial compliance at this time. The areas addressed through the board evaluations would be a good guide and a place to start as we consider how to come into full compliance on this goal. We must... the board is in partial compliance at this time. The areas addressed through the board evaluations would be a good guide and a place to start as we consider how to come into full compliance on this goal. We must continue to monitor how the equity lens affects outcomes for all learners in the EWSD. The end.
Nice report.
So, I did wonder about the two pieces about the board from the board evaluation. I wondered if they belonged here, or if they really belong in a board self-assessment.
Yeah.
What do folks think?
I'm sorry, what are your questions?
Whether the last, the student piece where it put board meetings, and there's two bullets on board meetings, the question is, does it belong in this board monitoring report, or does it belong in our board self-assessment that would come after you're no longer with us?
In June.
In June, yeah.
Interesting question.
It seems to me like it's part of the equity piece, because if you've got people, especially visitors, to be heard, and if we're hearing things about it, that would be a big equity piece to me, I think. I think the board piece is, is the training and teaching people not to be comfortable speaking out at meetings without...
Maybe it belongs in the self-assessment.
Do we have a goal that is the self-assessment? So, I know we...
Oh, yeah.
I was just looking to see, is there another goal that it fits under, if we're sort of doing a monitoring report theme?
Is your governance?
Yes, there is. It says determine the next step in our governance model and monitoring of our policies. I'm not sure it's any more closely aligned with that than it is with this, but...
It is our practice to do a self-assessment annually.
Did, we had a board goal around encouraging voter awareness and participation, right? I feel like both the ones about like who are our constituents and stuff about how we welcome people to our meetings are partly about that piece of how you have people in the community who aren't on the board to...
Is there... Kim?
I think if it feels like it can align in any way, it also feels as though it could fit in other goals and in our self-evaluation. I don't know that I see a negative to including it, because it's an area to consider as we move towards full compliance. So, if we think that there's any link to equity, or that it serves equity in any way, I don't see a problem in it remaining there. It just may also come up as evidence, perhaps in the other monitoring reports or in self-evaluation before our retreat, or however we go about doing that. I just, so I'm not sure that it's problematic unless it seems completely disconnected from the topic. I don't think I've read it that way, but I'm...
Leave it.
Yeah, I'd say leave it. I agree that if it's, you know, there are aspects of it that do connect to the equity lens, and as long as there's, you know, some connection there, then there's no harm in keeping it in.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you, Liz. I think this one is extremely difficult to tackle, so I appreciate you taking it on.
She's great at communications, though.
Good girl, right?
She should be on a task team.
She should be on a task team.
I don't think we'll have time for another monitoring report until our May, probably 21st meeting. But for those of you who haven't done one, if you have a particular goal that you would like to tackle, rather than having me assign you, please let me know. Thank you again.
Martha, I'm not volunteering. I'm volunteering our students because I asked them, but they would be happy to report on the plan for intentional opportunities to bring student voice to the board work through our student board members. And I think before they head out, it would be awesome to have them report on it. I did notice a potential schedule conflict in that I believe May 21st is honors night, and we may not have our student board members, and there may be one or two parents not here for part of the night.
Yeah, so they could potentially do it the first meeting.
Which is that, possibly, yeah, I, yeah, I'm sure that they could pull that off, too.
You could work on it.
Yeah, no, they certainly could. Yeah, yeah. I just know how busy regulation gets.
So, we might need somebody else. All right, let's move on to communications. You've already talked about...
I gave update, yeah, and we're meeting on Thursday. Really please, anybody who wants to come and be part of planning May 7th, you're welcome to come, 9:00 to 10:00 at East Campus.
And local and statewide updates? You have anything? So, I think in your board notes, we're the latest yields. We won't know what the final ones are until the legislature turns. Yeah, anything, Kim?
Nothing that I can recall seeing come as pressing or new.
Nothing that seems like particularly pertinent to us alone, or to us.
Actually, I do have one thing.
Sure, they'll come fast and furiously in the next month.
Brian, maybe you can help me with this. The GMT Forum is...
Is Monday, the 8th of April, from 5:00 to 7:00?
Which conflicts with...
It's Friday 4th.
No.
All right.
It might go 5:00 to 7:00.
Start at 7:00, yeah.
Oh, it conflicts with the trustees meeting, I think. No, I don't think so.
Maybe I have the dates wrong, but either way, I did want to mention that, because that has come up at, certainly at the select board meetings, and it does apply to us very much so. So, if there's opportunity for, you know, us to potentially get our voice heard, right? You know, I know that the select board is really concerned about having that route shut down because of the businesses they're trying to attract out to Saxon Hill. So, if, you know, the select board and if the EWSD board can weigh in, you know, as much oomph as we can put towards keeping that route alive, I think the better off we'll all be.
So, Brian, will you be there to speak? I mean, you've already expressed your...
Yeah, Jamie will be there.
Okay.
And, you know, but you, when you spoke, we don't have the board on record. It might be interesting to maybe have the board, Martha, I'm sorry to give you a homework assignment, but maybe, maybe have the board ask the chair to, you know, to write a letter or to, something that can go into the record. I'm meeting with Evan on Friday, and we'll talk about our strategy towards it, but I think it would be good if the school board was advocating for the continuation of Route 4 and minimal changes on Route 2.
So, I can't ask for action, Matt, because we haven't warned it, but it's the consensus of the board that you'd like me to write that letter.
Yes, please, you're okay.
Good, I'll do that. Okay.
Actually, Martha, if you wanted to get there at 5:30 and he has to speak first because you have a prior engagement, you might, you know, make a little bit of an impact.
Just what I want to do.
Adam's going to do a skit.
And Liz is going to do an illustration.
Okay.
Okay, so, do you think I need to speak, or I just need to write a letter?
Jamie will be speaking.
Okay, so, I'll write a letter, Jamie will speak.
Can I just double-check, only because he, didn't he used to work for them?
Yeah.
Did, I, not, I'm just worried that they see the full force and authority, so I don't want them to be confused in any way. So, if you think that it needs, you know, somebody not as connected to that past...
Yeah.
Or uniquely qualified to do it, but if that is too familiar and too easy to dismiss as opposed to...
The loudest voice, because our community spends $267,000 a year to bring the service in, so they, they will, they will have a significant voice, but I'll ask Jamie, and if need be, then I can go there beforehand, just looking at the public meetings.
Thanks for that reminder, Patrick. All right, so, our agenda for next meeting, we know we're going to have the instructional strategies, where we'll finally hear about flipped classroom, and you won't be there.
You can come, you're welcome.
No, I was just going to remind you to make sure that you got your, your equity book read minutes.
Yes.
You're missing from before, and you're going to be missing tonight.
So, we, yes, we have it covered. Thank you for reminding me. Yes, and I'm going to, I asked Beth to work with Lorna to remind me when minutes are missing, since I'm not going to have you to do it, Martha. I've got to, got to put it on to somebody else, so, yes. So, I think we have a number of things coming up for that agenda. Is there anything that people have been wanting on a future agenda? I do want to mention again that Brian O'Regan is going to be with us for every retreat, work session, whatever, on April 30th. I will be sending you an email about that tomorrow. Brian wants to have individual conversations with each of you. There'll be 15 or 20-minute conversations. He, the email will ask you to respond directly to him about what you, within some timeframes that he's given me, about when you could speak with him.
When can we expect this?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
What time on the 30th is it planned for?
We've talked about 5:00, we've talked about 5:30.
That's great.
So, we need, we'll nail that down hopefully by...
I have that book with me.
We talked about nailing down the agenda by the, maybe the 12th, certainly the 16th.
Right, yeah.
Okay. All right. Fourth message to the community from tonight's meeting, I think it's PFPs, I think it's school safety, and then I think it's the net metering agreement and the money we're going to save from that. Does that sound right to those?
And the upcoming vote, just to put it in.
Yes, please, if we get it out there in time, yeah. Okay.
Revised Liz's documents.
I think, I think the equity goal might be one that is more interesting than our statewide updates, so I wonder if, if a bullet on the equity goal and our self-monitoring of that is worthy. So, Patrick, maybe think about that, only because we, it's like our vision, and it's what we're talking about, and as a board, it's our top goal, so maybe it's worth showing that we're monitoring ourself around progress on our goal.
Yeah. It's easier to explain than the power agreement.
Yeah, easier than the power agreement, maybe a little more interesting. Not, not to everyone, I get it, Brian, I get it. But, anyway, because I think some of the other board monitoring goals have been a little more rote than equity, which is around their vision.
Yeah.
Okay, just a suggestion.
Okay, anything else? All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.